When they got the other boys, he worked all night and was coming home, I fell asleep. As he was driving straight, road curd, he just kept going. And then we worked this part in some half mile of turn.
So that's how it happened, ten miles up your house.
Yeah, that's what I thought about moving.
Get ten miles away from that house.
It's still be too good.
It's so good to see you.
He'll take you too. He'll answer, how about you?
All right, now it's three o'clock.
Oh, when did that show up? My on.
Downstairs, stairs.
That's your button pushed?
Yeah. Okay, we don't have to officially gavel in because it's not that kind of meeting.
Just start it up.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I'm sure staff has two requested changes. Staff would like, I sent the council an email, I'd like to add C as in Charlie, number three, as in vehicle purchases. That was the email regarding the F-450. And then I would like to add E as in Edward, number three, excise tax on alcohol beverages resolution, and our city attorney will be explaining that one, but it's in relation to the alcohol audit that the city council authorized last year and that we're in the midst of. And if the council is okay with those, also at the very bottom, I mentioned that where it said adjournment, I revised it to say consent agenda review and adjournment, so that the council has an opportunity to review the agenda for consent agendas items for Tuesday. But if the council otherwise likes that, then I'll pass out revised agendas. If not, we'll stick to what we got.
So we go over the, what we want to put on consent agenda at number...
That's at the very, very end, after your executive session. And I do want to mention that this was advertised as a work session and special called meeting for the purpose of having an executive session at the end.
I got no problems with revised agenda.
Any objections? Okay, we're good.
All right. I therefore, in order to make life easy for you, will pass out, and sorry, I'm going to do a little paperwork shuffle, those are new agendas where I highlighted the changes. And then I will, if you're okay now, also pass down to you the company documents that'll go with it. But I'm sorry, I didn't bring any tabs, but we can run a tab. Thank you. All right, Madam Chair, first on the agenda is the economic development, Main Street tourism. Chris does not have a PowerPoint, in fact, he's not here, but I'm sure he's watching. If he pops in the door with a PowerPoint, we're not going to allow him in. But we do, we do have two guests with us. We have Daniel Jackson and Andy Camp of Carroll Tomorrow. They wear dual hats. Obviously, Daniel Jackson wears lots of different hats. But on a quarterly basis, they come and give the council a quarterly update of the progress and exciting things. They try not to go into too deep in the woods because some things are just protected by economic development confidentiality, but we'll be talking some about that to you in executive session later. But with no further ado, if the council is amiable, we'd like to bring up to the podium Mr. Jackson and Mr. Camp.
No objections.
Hey, good afternoon. Good to see you guys, and thank you for allowing us to come and share. Councilman Best and I were just talking, you know, I moved here in the summer of seventy-two, it's hard to believe, forty-four and a half years ago. And so a lot of things have changed, but I will tell you that in the fifteen-plus years I've been doing this, I've never been more excited about our community than I am right now. There's some really, really special things going on all over Carroll County. So it's exciting to be here right now, and so it's very difficult for us in a very quick amount of time to share, but we're going to try to do like the rock and just skip over some things real quick. You know that we do a quarterly report, and then we do an annual report, and annual takes a little bit longer. It's not quite ready, we will get that to you in a printed fashion, so we will come back to you and either share or at least deliver to you or both, however you would like that, an official printed report for the year. Andy's going to share a few numbers in a minute, but real quick, and I brought the book just as a reference to everybody, but I know you've seen copies and we're not going to drill through all that, but let me just share a few kind of more global remarks and then a couple of highlights right quick, and then let Andy share a couple of things, and then we'll answer whatever questions you may have. It's important for us to know and celebrate that Georgia, for the fourth consecutive year, was chosen the best state in the union to do business. And that's important for all of us because it gives us that opportunity at the state level, so our state leadership, with our governor's office, the Georgia Department of Economic Development, and all of those folks who are out there representing our state as we globally compete to be ranked number four, or number one, rather, for four straight years. So that puts us in a good position as a state, and it allows us to have that opportunity to have access to folks. Secondly, I think you know, but we're part of a seven county joint development authority. So we're not just on an island out here without support or without relationships from our colleagues around us. So Pope, Harrelson, Carroll, Hurd, Troop, Paulden, and Kawida, and Carroll County, all together in a seven county joint development authority. We meet quarterly. We go on some of our mission trips now where we're out to showcase our community. We travel as a team, we pool resources, we have a joint, we have a website for those seven counties. And that's important because it gives us the opportunity to talk to more folks. They're more interested if we have a bigger footprint to begin with. Once we have that conversation, then we can begin to talk about specifically Carroll County. And so as we've shared, if January is an indication, it's going to be a great year for us. Amy Brown, by the way, is Chair of the Chamber for this year, and Gary Hewitt, who was our Chair last year, of course, is a Villarica guy. So you guys, we're represented and still represented in terms of our leadership here. You see, I think, a lot of our staff up here on a routine basis, I actually live in unincorporated suburbs of Tyes, and I was thinking, given the amount of time we're up here, maybe we should be on the voter roll up here, so we would welcome that if you let us. I think you're aware, we were up just a couple of days ago for the Think Carroll First campaign, which is a Chamber initiative, and we've been all over the county with that this week, and it's very exciting. And it's a chance for us to tell the story of Carroll County, all the assets that we have to offer, and it's the whole spectrum of healthcare, education, professional service, retail, recreation, whatever that may be. And it's a great message, and so we're excited about that. We will be bringing the Chamber Board back up for their meeting in June, so you guys will be hosting that, and generally, some of you come and attend that as well. Healthcare, we were here to celebrate, what was that, two days ago, the expansion of Tanner with a thirty-seven million project. And so it's very exciting, and that's a two-way street. You all are doing your part to grow this community, and Tanner is trying to do its part as well to respond to that. So it's neat to be a part of that and see those opportunities for growth in the healthcare. The Georgia Chamber put a team together to research around the state because a lot of communities are losing their healthcare, in some cases, a hospital is at risk. If a community loses a hospital immediately, their economy just went down by thirty percent. And then they lose the chance to recruit others because nobody wants to be a part of that community. So it, just one number that shows not that we need any verification, the importance of healthcare and growing that, not going the other direction. In terms of business activity, and Andy may speak to this a little bit, but I'll just tell you in general terms, for our Villarica area, there's interest in retail, restaurant, hotel, service industry, IT technology, professional services, all of that, we're seeing a lot of activity. The thing that excites us perhaps as much as anything is when our existing business, specifically industries, are growing. I will tell you, the industries are quite healthy in Villarica. And we're spending time with a lot of them, and a lot of neat things are going on, a lot of times for a lot of reasons, including competitive reasons, they don't necessarily want to talk about it, but just know, your industries are doing well, quietly growing, investing in equipment, investing in people, and that's exciting. We've talked about before, the number one issue in the state's workforce and education, and we spend a lot of time in that space. Just a couple of things to share with you, every year, we take teachers and counselors on tours of our industries. Last year, all three of the tours were actually here in Villarica. We went to UPC, which is a small new industry, we went to Southwire Synergy Center, and then we went to Print Pack. And it's always an eye-opening experience for teachers and counselors when they see the opportunity, the technology and all that's there. This will be the third year we'll do an eighth grade career academy. Can you imagine every eighth grader in Carroll County being assembled over two weeks? Coach, that's a little scary when you get up in front of eight hundred eighth graders a month or two before they finish school. They're given an opportunity to choose three career paths they think they might be interested in, the President of University, the President of College, and myself speak, and then they get to go to these three breakout sessions to help them begin to think through these opportunities and what they need to do to prepare themselves. You have the new College Career Academy that opened this year on the Villarica High School campus. Hopefully, you've all been through that, we're so excited. I've had the opportunity to be on that board since it was created. That is perhaps part of the future, if not the future, for our public education in high school, to give these young people hands-on experience. And the cool part is, they all chose to be there. So they all have a host high school, but they had to intentionally choose that curriculum. And so they're much more engaged because they're doing what they want to do, and it's hands-on. I encourage you to go see that. What's happening now is your businesses and your industries are now being introduced to them, partnerships, opportunities to employ those students, so there's some really neat things that are happening in that regard. Leadership is very important. David participated in our Leadership Academy last year, and now we have an alumni group for that because we've been doing it for almost thirty years. And we do have the only junior Chamber Commerce Board in the state, which are high school juniors from all of our high schools in Carroll County, City, County, and Oak Mountain. That's pretty exciting as well. So let me quit with that, let Andy share a couple of other stats, and then if we can answer questions, I'll just wrap my remarks up by saying, we appreciate your support. It's a privilege to represent Villarica and Carroll County. Also, I want to shout out to David, he's done a fantastic job of being engaged with us in many ways, and we appreciate your work in that regard, and supporting us and helping us and allowing us to work with you guys. Andy?
Welcome. Oh, thank you. I'm going to stick with some numbers real quick and kind of give you a few of those updates. So last year, our economic development numbers were seven hundred jobs. Those were new jobs created in the community, and sixty-four million dollars in new investment, again, throughout the larger community. And as Daniel mentioned, most of that's coming from our existing businesses, which are doing exceptionally well. We actually have a couple more meetings with a few of them here in the next couple of weeks as they continue to grow and look to hire and look to continue to invest in the community. Everybody's very happy with that. A couple of things that we do also is we help expose the community and the opportunities that are there to attract newer businesses, industries that may be emerging, but also, you know, the aforementioned, existing businesses sometimes need to add space, and sometimes we need to make sure we have sites for that. We look at exposure, lead generating opportunities that come through the Metro Atlanta Chamber, the Georgia Economic Developers Association, Southern Economic Development Council, the Select USA Department of Commerce has a wonderful foreign direct investment conference every year. And then also, ICSE, International Council of Shopping Centers, has a great event conveniently located in Cobb County every year for us, and we go and we pull in interest levels there, show them opportunities that we have. So what we do is we lean on those strengths, which are the connectivity, whether that's road, air, broadband, also having a large, diverse, and educated workforce, the fact that we're still affordable, but we can deliver a fast speed to market because we have the infrastructure in place to help people get the things that they need to get done quickly, whether that's entitlements or whether that's working through other permitting processes. We also have that serene lifestyle, I think we all really enjoy this part of the world where we live, but we're right down the road from Atlanta, so we have big city amenities nearby. We were actually having a conversation over lunch with the broker, and we were talking about the Falcons. And it feels like the home team, because it is. The other thing is, is we get the chance to put these successful businesses that are here in front of prospects, and they have a chance to tell them their story and how they've been successful here, not only in Villarica and Carroll County, but in West Georgia, and the fact that that proven track record speaks volumes. It's kind of a testimonial, the one-on-one, if you will. So we're going to rely on those strengths, how we're going to shore that up to create more opportunities, is we're going to continue to look at available buildings and creating sites that are ready to be rapidly implemented, ready for rapid development, reducing risk, helping that capital come in and quickly get deployed, creating jobs. So 2017, starting off with the bang, Daniel and I were talking about on the way up here, a lot of excitement right now, we're seeing a lot of people that either had sidelined a project come back or just new project activity. We're going to continue some of the events that we talked about as well, we're going to add one, the European American Investment Council, we'll be going with them on a trade mission as well. Foreign direct investment has been a very hot opportunity in the U.S. I think a lot of people hear the rhetoric and things, so there's some, you know, there's some interest in repatriating or expanding jobs from that as well. And then we'll continue to work with the Select USA Regional and Statewide Trade Opportunities. And then, of course, site development preparation, whether that's a building or whether that's creating other opportunities, we need more of those so we can continue to grow the employment and the tax base here in the community. The last number I'll leave you with is ninety thousand square feet. David's smiling because we met with somebody today, and we have ninety thousand square feet available, it's a great building, and thank goodness, we've got some really good investors that have taken that building and really, really made it an opportunity for the community. And we'll be working with someone to help lead that in there. All of this made possible through your investment in Carroll Tomorrow, we appreciate that, and a special thanks to the city staff for everything they do, very, very huge part of the team as well. Thank you all.
Thank you all. I know you're ready to take questions, so...
Sure.
Questions from the council? If not, I have a couple. Andy, when you were doing the numbers on the jobs, and you said it's mainly from existing jobs from the greater community, were you talking about those numbers come from Carroll County or from the region we're talking about with the other counties?
They're Carroll County numbers.
Okay, okay.
City of Villarica, Carroll County. We look at it as kind of one number because of the regionalism of the economy, if you will.
And the only other thing I'd want to know is if our industrial authority, and you're on that, Danny, are y'all working together well and good communication, everything else, with what's going on with our very limited industrial space?
The short answer is yes, and so much so that we had a quick meeting, and we're able to pull some things together for an opportunity just last week, and then we have, we've called a meeting on the eighth to have another discussion about some of the strategies that we just talked about, and have identified some places that we want to seek the opportunity to create some more industrial sites.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add to that, we're very pleased with your development authority, they do a great job, Kurt, and the entire group, so thank you for putting that team together, and yes, we have a great relationship with them.
That's good to hear. Anyone else? Going once?
I noticed it's on the agenda for Tuesday, y'all coming back Tuesday to give this pitch again.
I don't want to hear it again, but we will.
Oh, yeah. No, that's...
No, they don't...
There'll be a different crowd.
Uh-huh. I'm not sure, it probably would make more sense to defer till we get the printed copy so that we could cover that. I think it would be more meaningful for you, because I don't know anything else to say, plus for anybody else that was here. So why don't we do that? Once we get it, we'll let you know we have it, and then the next time you meet after that, we'll come, if that's okay with you all.
I think that was going to be our plan anyway.
We'll get it to you ahead of time, right before you looked at it, and if you have questions or comments, we'll be...
Okay. We know y'all don't have anything else to do except come up here and talk again on Tuesday, so, yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay, let's do that. Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Andy, thank you, Daniel.
All right, Madam Chair.
Financial, yes.
All right, under finance, we have the Carroll County Water Authority Water Purchase Agreement. We have, of course, our CFO, Ms. Sarah Hefty, who is going to hand out the larger versions of the payday.
Don't get Matt any.
It's a bad time you grew those things.
Not till afterwards, we'll decide if he gets one.
How many can I have?
How many can I have? We said payday, not windfall. Well, thank you. And then also, participating in a company, Ms. Sarah, today will be Matt Wyndham. Matt Wyndham's the Executive Director of the Carroll County Water Authority, and we certainly appreciate him coming up here and addressing the council. So Ms. Sarah's going to give a presentation, and then we'll entertain Mr. Wyndham to come up after.
All right, good afternoon. Today, we're coming to talk to you about water rate update. This is just the water side. We have a meeting scheduled on February sixteenth at three P.M. to discuss the whole enterprise fund situation, so today, we're just going to focus on the water rates. All right, on the next slide, I wanted to kind of recap where we were in September when I last presented, handed out those payday bars, because we were talking about how the cost, the current price that we had in place did not cover the cost of our services. So to put it in an easier way to understand, our dollar candy bar, we were selling for seventy-six cents. Or to put it in a football terminology, since we have the Super Bowl coming up, we were losing thirty-two to twenty-five. That was in September. Looking at just the water sewer fund of the enterprise funds, the end of our last audit, which was actually at the end of 2015, our reserve was one point four million. And as you can see there, the three months of expense is just over that by about thirty thousand dollars, and we, the city does have a fund balance policy, a reserve policy, and it expects that we have three months of expense, so you can see we haven't quite met that. So we've kind of titled this fund unhealthy at this point. We have less than the three months' expense, but I think more importantly, we don't have any reserve there for future infrastructure, expansion, or even emergencies. And then lastly, that shows the water sewer fund net income actually lost for the past five audits. You can see it's been a loss since March of 2013. So that's where we were in September. And since then, just to kind of recap, everybody, get everybody on the same page, in the fall, we had the drought designations. On November seventeenth, I'm in charge of this, on November seventeenth, Governor Deal issued a Level Two drought response for us, and on December sixth, the council adopted a new tiered rate structure for the residential customers. That only affected the residential senior and the regular residentials.
You see, the seventh rains came.
You can see, the biggest change was the, added an additional fourth tier on the water. So since then, we, on January eighteenth, we received a letter from Matt Wyndham, the Executive Director of the Carroll County Water Authority, he's also here, basically explaining that these new forecasted rates will be presented to the Board of Directors, and he could speak more on that if he wanted to. But I just want to highlight, it shows rate per cubic feet and rate per thousand gallons, we'll be talking about thousand gallons. Currently, we buy a thousand gallons at two sixteen five, so I've rounded it to two seventeen, and you can see how it's increasing from 2018 to 2022. So here, I'm showing more about the ten-year spread or so. You can see in 2012, again, we're talking about the thousand gallons, not the unit price. In 2012, we were buying a thousand gallons at two oh one, and at the end of 2015, that got bumped up to our current price, which, again, I'm rounding to two seventeen, so that was a sixteen cent increase. And then with this letter that we've seen, and I'm using the higher end of each rate, of each, what would you say, a range, excuse me, so from 2018 to 2022, that increase from where we are today is about a hundred and sixty-one percent. You can see that the increase per year is thirty, twenty percent, but in total, we're going from two seventeen to five sixty-five. Again, I'm using the upper end of the range, just in case. So I wanted to see, well, how much water have we been buying? You can see, I went back to 2012. I did show the units purchased there, and then I converted it to gallons. 2012, 2014, we were buying about two hundred, a little less than two hundred million gallons per year. And then twenty, at the end of 2015 and then 2016, we had the odor issues, and we, in 2016, we bought, from January to July, we only bought, we did not purchase any, we did not produce any water. So in 2016, we bought four hundred fifty-nine million gallons of water, but that, as you can see, that's kind of an anomaly. So what is the average per day? You can see, from 2012 to 2014, we averaged about five hundred half a million gallons per day, and that grew some in 2015, and then 2016, it pretty much doubled. Again, that was, that year is kind of an anomaly because we had to purchase. And you can see, in 2016, we bought almost a million dollars worth of water. So going back to the increase, I wanted to see, what does that look like in dollars? This is the same chart, the first four columns is the same chart I already showed you, but on the end, I included the dollar increase. So this is based on 2015 volume. You can see the dollars, dollar amount that it would increase. So by the end, 2022, it pretty much doubles.
Based on which, which volume?
Twenty fifteen, because twenty sixteen was an anomaly, so I used twenty fifteen volume.
Fifteen, yeah, sixteen, we had to buy all that water because of the smell, though.
Right. Okay, this is our, this is the city's cost per thousand gallons. Since we don't right now buy a hundred percent of our water, we produce some and we purchase some, I wanted to see what is our cost per thousand gallons. So the top shows the expenses that we have each month that go into producing a thousand gallons of water. First is kind of a formula for purchase of water, and that'll depend on, we'll talk here in a second, how much I'm calculating here. The next portion of our expense is for the water plant. We do have the personnel there, we have maintenance and repairs, we have chemicals, electricity to keep the plant going, we have the depreciation of the actual plant itself, we have capital purchases or improvements, that's based on 2017. And then I allocate half of our distribution and collection department, because they distribute, we distribute the water through the lines, and then we collect the wastewater through the lines. So I've allocated half of their time, half of their maintenance and repairs, half of their depreciation on the water sewer lines to water, and then half of the allocation to the general fund. I've spoke about that before, that is, if we had a standalone utility, they would still have the finance department, H.R., fleet maintenance, I.T., legal, so we've allocated from the enterprise funds a portion to pay for those. So you can see the total monthly expense going in to produce and purchase our water is two hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Based on, we've looked at how much water, we know they're producing and purchasing, and how much I know we're billing out, and we're using some round numbers today. So these numbers are based on producing a million gallons per day. When the plant first got back up in production last fall, we were producing about a million gallons per day, which meant we were purchasing about half a million gallons per day, so forty-five million gallons per month. You can see our cost per thousand is five sixteen. Current, when I spoke to Pete, I think, last week, with the rain and things, we've actually been producing more, we've been producing one point two five million gallons per day. So again, using those same round numbers of forty-five million gallons per month, just saying, we must be purchasing about two hundred fifty thousand gallons per day. So that brings our cost per thousand down, the expenses on the top are the same, but you can see our cost per thousand has now gone down to four eighty. So the more we produce, the lower the cost per thousand gallons. And the little note on the side says we are permitted to produce one point five million gallons per day, we're not quite there, and I know Pete has spoken about that before, but that is the capacity of the plant. So that's where we are today, but we do know we have these other costs that are coming down the road. So it's the same cost that we've already discussed, but I have shown a three percent increase over the future years, and at the top, you can see what the Carroll County water rate will be. And using those same forty-five million gallons per month, starting at five sixteen, the cost per thousand gallons grows all the way to six eighty-nine. The question comes up, can't we buy all of our water? And so here, I'm comparing the cost that we've already seen compared to what if we purchased it. So you can see down at the bottom, I've taken out the producing, we're purchasing solely, which takes our purchase of water at the top, that more than triples our cost of purchase of water. The water plant expenses go down slightly, and I'll talk about the setup of that in a second, but the way our system is right now, the water still would go through the plant, so we would still have the cost of the plant. However, we would hope some of the maintenance and repairs and things would go down, and supplies would go down, so there would be some cost reduction, but maybe not as much as initially thought. And so you can see, there is a difference in the cost per thousand from five dollars and sixteen cents to six dollars and eighteen cents, so that would be... So that would be a dollar or two loss for every thousand gallons. Like I said, the way the system is set up now, the water still goes through the water plant. The water that we purchase from Carroll County Water Authority comes through a valve in the yard of the plant. Pete could probably show us where on the picture. And then it goes into the clear well and is pumped into the distribution system. From there, it goes into the Hickory level tank.
Is that all the water we get from Carroll County goes to the plant?
Yes.
Let me see, we've got a couple of connections from Carroll County. One of them is at the Highway 61 booster pump station, where we have a meter at that location as well, we pull water into the pump up, and then the small subdivision down below, Carroll County, water comes through, we get a very few, that's the, we're looking at the video.
Yes.
Did I you say, all the water goes to the clear well?
All the water that comes in the plant?
From Carroll County?
Well, they have a transmission line that comes down Van Row, and it comes in, it's not in this frame of this photo, it comes in the left hand, there's a vault in the far left-hand corner where that fence runs, where it's metered, it comes in the plant, that line actually goes around behind the plant, we've got two clear wells there, goes into the clear well that's directly under the building, and then it fills one out in the yard as well. But when we're pulling water from the Highway 61 booster pump station, that water is just picked up and then repumped up at that location, it doesn't necessarily come through this meter. We meter it at that location, so we have two locations that we need to borrow.
Question is, does all the water go through the clear well, that water plant? Okay, thank you.
Was the answer no, because I thought that was the case, I was told that anyway.
So this is showing that same comparison that I've, again, spread it out over the five years. So you can see, the difference goes from one, the loss of $1.02 on 1,000 gallons to 321 by the end of 2022. What about Douglasville Douglas County Water Sewer Authority? We do not have a contract with them right now. I called to see if they had a set municipal rate. Basically, we would have to negotiate a rate, and they said it would probably be on an escalating scale as well, as well, and it would probably be higher to start. So it may not escalate as fast, as quickly as the one we're seeing with Carroll County, but it would probably start higher. The water would go into the booster station near Mirror Lake Elementary, and from there be pumped into Mirror Lake, the Mirror Lake tank. So this brings us back to our payday example. So with these numbers I've shown you, by the end of 22, 2022, our dollar candy bar, we would be selling it for 89 cents at our current rates. And at the senior discount, it would be 66 cents for our dollar candy bar. I promise I'm only pushing it once. So we need to look to the future. We need to do a rate study so that we can, if we brought in professionals to do a rate study, they could do modeling for us to look towards the future, look at future infrastructure, future growth of the city, see what type of tier structure would be best for us. They would be able to bring some options for us. We need to think about building up the reserve, as was mentioned before. This is required by the city's fund balance policy. We need at least a minimum of three months, which we're just below, but we are not prepared for emergencies, or future capital purchases, investments, growth, those sort of things. And then just some talking points for us to think about and maybe discuss at our next meeting, but thinking about future infrastructure. Are we going to increase the capacity of our reservoirs, which would mean dredging those? If we did that, we would have to increase our permit, go through the permitting process at our plant again. I know it's been discussed in the past, what about a new water plant? Is that still down the road for us? Or participating in the Carroll County, their new reservoir? Or revisiting the purchase contract with the Douglasville Douglas County Water Sewer Authority? Or perhaps a mix of both? Questions? Pete has the answers.
I've got a question. I've heard before that we could only produce 750,000 gallons, and then I heard a million, and today, I heard you say 1.25.
That's how much we've been producing now?
We're permitted to produce.
Permitted is 1.5.
1.5 million. And our need is what?
We, like I said, we're using round numbers, and from what I could tell on what we are billing out, it's about 45 million per month, but that doesn't include the water the city uses and that sort of thing, so.
In regards to the rate study, is that something we could do in-house, or do we need to source that out to someone else that has skills we don't have? That's my question. Oh, sorry.
I think a professional group could bring more experience and knowledge. Yes, I can crunch numbers, I can use Excel, but they would have a greater body of knowledge to bring to us that I think we could benefit from. Plus, I have a lot to do.
Understood, thank you. Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, then we certainly would like to invite Matt Wyndham, the Executive Director of the Carroll County Water Authority, who can, you know, give the perspective of the Water Authority, how we're here now. He certainly didn't spring this on us. You know, we've been meeting over several months, and so we knew that something would come afoot. As we got to the latter part of last year, we started talking rough numbers, and now what we've got is a draft contract. And so, you know, obviously, as staff, we're, we want to make sure that you are best educated on their needs, their situation as an authority, and why, why at this time, it's important that they start looking at their rates. And Ms. Sarah mentioned rate study, and that's probably one of the first things that Mr. Wyndham will start out with, so.
Okay, so let's bring Matt up, and even though it seemed like I was giving you a hard time, just know that if, when you have hard news for us, know that we know what it's like to be in your position.
You hadn't seen nothing yet.
I didn't prepare remarks, so bring your hand out.
You want to use our PowerPoint?
Thank you. Now, when are you going to go up on the rates? Were you about?
Get your own computer.
I got it now, I figured it out. You going up on rates because you own a new boat. That's where it is. Where that gets out.
Well, I do, I personally don't feel comfortable first and foremost.
Just stay, stay close to that mic.
So you say now?
The folks at home want to hear you.
Okay, Berlin.
So I guess I wanted to start here, I'm assuming you can see this, the, with imposed, what I've called forecasted rates. First off, that's, that's not approved by our board. That's what I would feel comfortable recommending to my board for consideration. And you might say, well, why haven't you taken it to your boards yet? Well, when I realized that the city was having conversations about doing a rate study, and realized that the city had decisions to make about their water rates, I felt like I need to get in front of the city and at least let you know where we're at and what our philosophy is as we move forward. That way, you can plan for what you may need to do and the decisions you might need to make, versus letting you move forward through that and then come back later and say, well, by the way, we need to adjust our rates. So what I want to explain a little bit is how those numbers are calculated for us. So I do have per 100 cubic feet, which some, that's how we bill, and that's called a unit, that's 748 gallons, but most municipalities talk about water in per thousand gallon cost, and so that's why I've got the column to the right. We've done a, a cost of service study. We hired a CPA firm that specializes in that, that does cost of service studies for utilities, not just water and sewer, but also electric. That firm, we've used for a number of years, and we're very pleased with them. They use a, a, a process that the American Water Works Association has, has prepared, and it's the M1 manual for determining the cost of service of water and sewer supply, and they go through that process. And so they look at your operational costs, they look at your debt service costs, they look at your fixed cost, variable costs, they look at your capital work plan. To be a viable system, you don't just need to prepare for today, but you've got to prepare for the future. They look at all those things. And then it comes out with a number of the cost of service, and we've looked at it based on our customer classes. So we looked at overall, we looked at residential, we looked at, we have an ag class, because that's a large part of the county, we have an industrial class, a commercial class, an irrigation class, and then we have a municipal class. What we found is, we're doing really well on cost recovery on all of our classes, and overall, fairly well, except the municipal. And so if you look at the municipal, the first column in the thousand, that's basically taken us to what we have determined as the cost of service to serve Villarica, 1,000 gallons of water. That's the, if you look over the five-year forecasted rates, the 484. Now, that number changes a little bit year to year, and the reason being, it depends on how the user uses our system. For example, I have other municipal customers who use our system, our supplies differently, and their, their cost of service may be 20% less than the city of Villarica's. You might ask, why? Well, primarily it's because we talk a lot about average day. I know even in the presentation, we look at an average day supply is, you know, 1.25, or we've talked about here, you know, a million gallons per day. Well, that's great, but what you've really got to meet is that peak day, because people want the water every day, not just the average day. And so when you, you have to build your system to meet those peaks. Unfortunately, the peak capacity ends up being the most expensive capacity. You've got to make sure that, the way we described in the rate study is, if all I had to do was install a two-inch line to serve, you know, a customer with 10 gallons of water, that's relatively inexpensive. But if I've got to have a large line to meet fire protection, and then I've got to meet the peak demands for the irrigation and all, and all that comes along with it, well, then the cost begins to go up. So depending on how the systems use our water, or purchase it from us, it affects the rate. But the first column there is just getting us to the cost of service. What I did, and, you know, hindsight, good or bad, I went ahead and added, added a CPI escalator, just for, we know cost of services are, most likely go up. So each year, there's a 4% CPI escalator in there. Now, whether it's 4% or 2% or 0% or 5, we don't know, but that was just for planning purposes. So that, that's why, when you see the range, that's what's generating that gap in the range. The first number is really the cost of service, the second number is including a CPI escalator, which has compounded over those years, and that's the change there. You know, I think our, our, the main point was, we want to make sure that we communicate with you, we've had a great relationship with the city of Villarica. We have an existing contract that we signed in '05 with the city. One of the problems with that contract is it does not allow us to adjust the rate as it needs to be done. And so that's one of our challenges, is we know that we're in recovery, we need to recover our cost of service, because we want to be equitable with our residential customers. That if they're paying what the cost service says is their full, full cost, then we want to move the municipals up to that same level. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
It was clear for me, no question.
I think it's pretty clear to me, too. I appreciate you letting me know what that second number was. I would have asked that, but since it's the CPI included, I understand.
Yeah, and, you know, the last few years, CPI's been 1%, 0%. However, we're, we're in a different time. Things are changing. I didn't want to shoot that number too low, you know, it, it might be 1% or 2%. And also, I wanted to make sure, you know, we, we didn't want to do anything abruptly. We want to make sure that if there are changes that need to be made for the city, that you know, and you can prepare for those, you can plan for those, we can plan for those together, and try to work together to the best solution possible. You know, if we look at our capital work plan to give you some idea, for the next five years, we're looking at about a $30 million capital work plan. We're preparing to expand our water plant, which is going to be at least $20 million of that capital plan within the next three years. And, you know, quite honestly, some of that expansion is due to the increased demands of the city, which we're glad to supply and serve. Others are growth in accounting and other municipality customers. So if I, if I would, if you are interested in a rates, a rate study, I would recommend finding someone that can do a full cost. We were not qualified, we didn't thought we were qualified to do that internally, and so that's why we went out. Because if you get a good rate study, I think you would be happy with it. If you get one that doesn't get the full cost of service, you may find out three years later, five years later, you know, we didn't get the full picture.
Now, these numbers you're showing here are not just the cost for us, Villarica, these are any of your customers that go see these rates.
Our cost of service changes depending on customers, and I can give you a little bit more information about that, without getting just real specifics, but I did bring our, a copy of our cost of service study. And it's about a 50, it's about a 50-page report that's generated to us, and this is a draft I've been working on, so I've got a few notes on it. But for example, and there's, there's multiple ways you can kind of skin the cat of getting to the, the revenue required to cover the expenses. The way we've looked at it is maintain a small base charge. For example, the city's current base charge is zero for each meter. I proposed $150. There's a way to have a larger base charge, it might be thousands of dollars, and then your, your magic rate goes down. But however you, it's needing to generate the same amount of revenue. And I bring that up because of our, our residential customers, and I'll give you an example for them. So for a residential customer, we're looking at about $5,000. So compare it to this, they're a little bit higher than your 484. I'm sorry, $5 a unit, let me back up, are we billing units? $5 a unit. But if you look at what we're charging our residential customers, and we have a conservation rate, so the lower user customers probably aren't paying quite enough, but somewhere about 6, 6,000 gallons or eight units, that's about the break-even point, and that's about the average residential customer consumption. And then the higher-end users, because of the conservation rate, the more you use, the more you pay, they end up subsidizing the very small, low, low-end users. But overall, we're around, if the goal's 100%, we're at 101% cost recovery on residential customers. Compared to the municipals, we're in the 40 to 45% range. Now, the reason it hasn't been such a big issue for us is, is the majority of our revenue and, and customers are residential, come from that portion. The municipal is a smaller amount, and that's why we're able to take some time to move, to move those rates, or at least forecast those to go up. Did that answer your question, I hope?
How many miles of pipe you got in county?
We've got approximately 800 miles of pipe, about six elevated water storage tanks, three ground storage tanks, and a number of pump stations on the water side. We've got 8 million gallon per day treatment capacity at the water treatment plant. The, the reservoir was built to supply 13 and a half million gallons per day. It will do somewhere in there, probably a little bit less than that, based on the more recent droughts. Which, to touch on the point that was asked earlier about capacities of your plant, you know, that's a number, your permit, what you can supply, that's something you have to get comfortable with. What do you supply reliably? You know, whether it's a million, a million and a half, or 750,000, whatever that number is, that's a number we have to get comfortable with on our end. What can our, our lake and plant produce reliably? Of course, again, we got to make sure we meet that need each and every day.
Even in a drought, right?
In the most, well, and that's one thing that, that's not just at our place, and probably not just here, but a lot of places in central and north Georgia is. Since the 1950s, specifically started in 1999, the droughts have gotten progressively worse. So the 54 to 56 drought was a very bad drought, there was a bad drought in the 70s and one in the 80s. But the drought of 99 to '01 was worse than those droughts. And then there was a drought of '07 to '09, and it dwarfed those droughts. It was much, much worse. It was much, much worse. And so the drought's impact, you have to, you have to have philosophy. Are we going to decide where our water supplies meet the drought of record, or we just want to meet an average dry time? And we think we have to plan to make sure to meet the drought of record because we want to make sure our customers have water in situations like we may still be in, uh, in like we were in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So we, uh, you know, I, I didn't prepare anything, just kind of remarks off the cuff, but, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, that, that I'm available to you, uh, today, that, uh, to the council. If you have any questions, uh, please feel free to call me, contact me. I'd love to sit down and discuss any, any of these matters.
Any more questions?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation because I think it helps us understand the situation we're in, too.
And we're, we're also having a conversation with the city of Temple as well, uh, regarding similar. And again, their, everybody's rates a little bit different, but it's depending on how you use the system. But, uh, if you've got any more questions after date, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, item C, Public Works, Pete. CBBG, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take this one because, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Um, the council, uh, last year had authorized, um, uh, funds for a grant writer, uh, which, uh, was engaged by, uh, the city. Um, that, um, uh, grant writer has, has now, uh, worked with the city. We've gone out, we've surveyed, um, the, um, uh, the key area that, um, is a, um, a, a target for, uh, social economics, uh, that mirror a federal, um, uh, community development grant for, um, pipeline replacement. Um, we are still, um, uh, hopeful that the, uh, grant amounts at some point will change, um, from, from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, but, uh, at this point, um, uh, the, um, uh, the document, uh, is, uh, being put together. Um, and that we're at the point where, um, uh, we'll have to, um, uh, have, uh, it signed, uh, in order to get the submittals and start this process. So this is a, um, a resolution that is actually required, um, uh, for that pipeline, uh, replacement, uh, project. Um, and authorize, um, the mayor to, uh, sign all of the, uh, documents, um, that, uh, will be prepared by Alan Smith in order to seek that, um, uh, uh, half a million or maybe even seven fifty. Um, uh, and, um, keep in mind, there is a, um, a matching, a portion to the city, which of course is why we've got earmarked in the, uh, budget, um, pipeline, um, uh, funds, uh, from the local, um, which, um, uh, come from SPOST, uh, in order to, um, uh, make that. This, um, uh, so I'll say no more on that. It's just simply, um, authorizing that based on last year. Went into a little bit more, um, because I knew the councilman from, uh, Word, um, uh, Four was not on the council when, uh, you all authorized that.
Unbudgeted repairs, too?
All right, unbudgeted repairs. Uh, Nick, do you want to come forward as we go through this? Um, uh, because you can ask some specifics. Um, and Nick, Nick has brought me, um, uh, some corrected numbers, so, um, I, I just want to address this. But, um, Nick, I'll fill in the gap if you want to approach the council and, um, uh, let's go gentle on him. He's in his new role, so, um, so I may punt back to assist, so it's all yours, Nick.
All right, this is pretty straightforward. Um, it's a request to repair, repair one of our vans that the Douglas County inmate crew uses. Um, this van was passed down from community service when it was still, um, going. And the van itself, if you don't mind, can I make some changes? It actually has a hundred and thirty-four thousand miles, um, and not ninety-six. And then down below that, which I'll talk about here in a sec, uh, Ford offers a hundred thousand mile warranty and not a fifty thousand mile warranty. Um, the request is just to get a new motor installed in it. The motor would be a crate motor from the Ford factory in Atlanta. The cost is about sixty-three hundred dollars. Um, the old one that is in it has a cracked block and overheated, and so it's not functional right now. Um, and the van itself, it doesn't have many miles, to me, it doesn't have many miles. I think it would be, uh, beneficial to us, especially if we do start up community service again, um, to go ahead and repair this van. It's a good van. When it was transferred from community service to Douglas County, I ended up probably spending about twelve hundred dollars on just repairing it, doing a lot of maintenance that wasn't really neglected, but, you know, it was just used for community service, so we didn't really, they didn't complain too much, but we, you know, we did routine maintenance on it, of course. But when it got transferred, I went ahead and installed new suspension components and et cetera. So that's pretty much it. It's just, we requested to spend sixty-three hundred dollars for a new motor.
It's, it's still a three year warranty, but a hundred thousand miles?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's a three year warranty, a hundred thousand miles. And the van would be used if we, when the, the community service program starts back up, it'd be used to pick trash. Um, so I'm sure we would hit the three year mark before we hit a hundred thousand miles. Um, they don't drive a lot on the road, obviously, they're just kind of stop and go.
What's the prospects of community service picking up?
Um, the, um, um, in the budget you approved, um, uh, two, um, uh, part-time personnel. Um, I've spoken to the chief, um, and, um, the, uh, uh, city attorney and I have had, uh, conversations. Uh, we're going to, uh, set up a meeting, um, with the, um, uh, the judge and the court staff to, um, sit down, uh, talk about, um, uh, community service and sentencing. Um, our goal is to try to, um, uh, have as much of that manpower, um, here in Villareca. Um, but, um, we recognize that right now, the Douglas County, uh, crew is having to use, uh, the old state, uh, prison van. Um, so if we don't come up with a van that they can use, we'll sort of be in a pickle, if you will. Um, I, I knew council, uh, well, the marshman was going to look at me when I said pickle. But, um, but anyway, um, uh, so a new van itself, um, would be, um, uh, just north of, uh, eighteen thousand, so we think this is a good compromise.
So we're going to use this for that purpose?
This will take, actually, and give it back to, um, Douglas County, uh, inmate crews for theirs, because they use it four days a week. And the, um, the state van, as I understand, uh, from Charlie Davis', it has a slow oil leak. Um, so we want to be able to use that for the community service, uh, part-time, uh, um, given the amount of hours. But, you know, if you disagree, um, Nick, let me know.
No, I agree.
Any other discussion on that topic?
No.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, C three, vehicle purchases?
All right, this one, um, we were actually going to wait, um, until, um, all the quotes and stuff were done. Uh, in the budget, um, there is a, um, service vehicle for the distribution collections, uh, group. Um, however, um, while we were going through, getting the quotes, comparing them to, um, state, um, uh, purchasing, um, uh, we were, uh, informed by, um, uh, Don Rich Ford that they actually have, um, special concessions on one of the vehicles. Um, this happens to be an F four fifty, um, that, uh, is about sixty-one hundred dollars less right now to them than on state contract. Um, we had circled back and, uh, asked them, how long is that going to be put in place? They said whenever Ford decides to pull and say no more. Um, so we don't, we, we couldn't in good faith gamble and wait a month and potentially lose sixty-one hundred. So this is a request for the council to authorize us to move forward and buy this, uh, F four fifty, um, chassis cab, um, from Don Rich Ford for thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. It is budgeted. Um, uh, we were just simply waiting to get all of the, uh, vehicle quotes before we came to council.
I don't remember. How much did we budget for that?
Um, you actually, um, budgeted, um, uh, more than this figure. Um, so the, um, I'd have to go back and look at the exact, uh, budget. Ms. Eric can pull that up for us, uh, in a moment. But, uh, this is, uh, well below. Um, we, we always check the state, um, contracts and we put those pricing in, uh, the budget, um, uh, when we, uh, start to figure. That's actually how we start the, uh, budget process. So that's how I'm very confident it's well below that.
Anything else on that one? Does this take a, um, a different class of license to drive?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, item D, Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
If you will recall, um, in October of twenty sixteen, um, we had a request for the use of the V-Plex for the badge fest. City council approved the request. Since then, um, Mr. Mecklen, our city attorney, worked with the, um, representative to draft, eh, a contract that is before you today for, uh, consideration of the final use in terms of the V-Plex for that particular day, which is, uh, May thirteenth. And that should be in your packet. Mr. Mecklen may have additional things that he wants to add or...
Do we make a correction in the, uh, amount of the rental? That it isn't actually zero?
It's not zero. I'd sent our city attorney a, uh, email asking him for guidance as to how long we were going to address that, um, just so, um, especially with the new council member. Uh, so during that presentation, um, I actually personally offered to, uh, make a donation to, um, uh, this, um, uh, nonprofit event in order to cover the actual fees. Um, I, uh, actually did, um, uh, make that check payable and, and it went to the city, so it's somewhere. Um, but, um, if you want to address that, because it's not zero, um, it was paid for, um, but we didn't have a contract, so we just didn't want to, uh, have money changing hands.
We need to fill in the blank of whatever that figure is then.
It was five hundred dollars. And then, um, um, and then we, we had also chatted, you know, it was the consensus of the council that, and, and I agreed. It's like that it's a bargain and, and that, um, Parks and Rec is going to come back with us with the new price list. Once we have the community grant, um, uh, settled out, then we'll come with you with the addendum for all the pricing for the a la carte things.
The two things that I would note about this one, we still do need to come up with a, a price for what it would cost us to repair the field if it gets torn up so that we can make them post a bond in that amount. And then the second thing is that we're going to try and be very, very careful about the insurance policy that they provide to us because based on our experience with the bikers battling breast cancer event several years ago, we have learned the lesson that we need to be very careful with the insurance policies that are posted.
So where the rental fee is currently zero, that should be five hundred?
And then the bond, we don't know.
And then on the bond, we're leaving that blank?
But is it going to...
I heard what you just said, but shouldn't we have that filled in?
Do you think we can figure out what that cost would be? I mean, I suspect the mayor would be the person who could give us what the cost is in the past to repair and replace the turf.
Because they had to do it once after that one concert.
After the Luke Bryan concert, one time we had to completely replace the turf.
I know the last time I had to get the estimate on, mm, I know just the Mill Amphitheater, um, after we had all those rain events, uh, over a year ago and, you know, we thought we were going to lose the grass, um, that, um, that repair was actually just shy of twenty-five thousand. And, and so this is a much larger field, um, so.
So we'll have a number there Tuesday.
Yeah, or the mayor will help us fill in. E- even if you, and, and this may be one thing, if you do the square footage, because you've got those sod quotes and things like that, you might want to...
That's pretty much what I had mentioned in before. We'll just pull the square footage and then, um, note the type of specific Bermuda sod that's out there.
And then add fifty percent.
We have a number per square foot, you're saying?
We can pull the square footage on the, the field to make a determination of what the cost, replacement cost would be.
So we'll know what the bond should be?
Yeah. Fifty thousand.
And one last point that they want is they wanted a rain date from us. I don't know if we can come up with that, but...
I've looked at the available dates, um, and the following weekend is certainly available. Um, we don't have anything scheduled, so...
I think we can just provide that date to them then, as they can have it then if it gets rained out on the thirteenth.
We're in a drought, it's not going to rain.
So it doesn't conflict with anything else that, that could be at the V-Plex?
No, there isn't anything scheduled at this time. Um, everything that we have scheduled is going, right now, ends the end of April. That last, the first week going in is still available if anything needs to extend, but right now, nothing else from that second week on is on the books.
When does baseball start?
Um, practices are starting now. If, or are you talking about the official games? We would, that, probably that first week in, going into March. We were practicing already, so it should be March.
I guess what you're getting at is it's going to be a conflict on May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, yep.
So, no, we've looked at the schedule already. So what is scheduled in terms of games and what, when it's expected to end will be the end of April. So should anything go over, we already have this on the books. We have that first week to May to go into, um...
The All-Star games that are available that come out there is, is the question. And that goes all the way into June.
So there isn't anything that's scheduled right now, because we sat down and we looked over the schedule.
So this pretty well ties up, May thirteenth.
Anything else on that one? Okay.
What about the rain date? Are we going to do a rain date? Would that be, will we have that Tuesday?
I will go ahead and add that in.
The following, the following week. Okay, uh, Velcro pygmies. I remember when I had to ask somebody what that was.
So if you recall, last June, uh, the city scheduled, uh, the Velcro pygmies, uh, as their opening concert. Toward the end of the night, we certainly had a, a, a major rain out, uh, event. And due to popular demand, if you will, um, we thought we'd be bringing them back this year again as a opening for our summer concert series. Saturday, June tenth, um, from eight to ten. It's essentially going to be the same setup as last time. We do have in here, uh, a requirement for a family-friendly concert. Um, in addition to the concert, they have also requested the three hotel rooms, very similar to what we had last year, so...
And do we want to mention that we have rain insurance on this one this year?
Yeah, we are, um, going to do the rain insurance. Uh, there's still, I'm doing, there are a lot of variables that come with that, but yes, we will be doing the rain insurance this year. Last year, just so that everyone understands, we did have, um, we would have gone through the concert if not for the lightning that started. Um, but we more or less do kind of rain or shine events, and, and that's really the, the big factor, particularly for this time of year.
It's a safety factor. If you can stay out in rain, it's a little, little more risky with the lightning. We don't know right now what that insurance will cost yet. Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't have a final number on that, but hopefully I'll get that finalized before Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, Vicki, um...
It's cheaper than, uh, we scheduling, uh, an entire concert.
Ms. Vicki, um, on the, uh, rain insurance, um, Clint Chance had mentioned that, uh, he's got, of course, with his radios and stuff, he's got quite a bit of experience with that. If, if you or whoever your staff's working with that can touch base with him, um, because, um, uh, you know, it's always, um, it's the devil in the details, as, as you know, as to rain, lightning things. So, so he's offered to, uh, uh, shed some light on that, maybe some guidance.
Any further discussion?
So we'll have that rain insurance number Tuesday?
Yes, I'm, I'm working on that as we speak.
Actually, the rain insurance, probably not. Um, that would be just a, um, uh, that's well with under the purchasing. So the only thing that the council's, um, looking at is the actual contract, um, because it approves... So the only thing that the council's looking at is the actual contract, because it approves contracts. So there will not be a, anything for rain insurance attached to the Tuesday contract.
So what it costs us to do this, we won't have the full number?
No, you'll have the number for the actual contract for the Velcro pygmies.
Right.
But not rain insurance. Rain insurance is...
That'll be part of this, right? That'd be part of the cost of doing this.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't fall under the purview of the council.
I understand that. I just was asking about whether we'd have that number on Tuesday. You're saying no.
And it's doubtful that we will. That's correct.
Will we have a limit on it? Will we just spend whatever?
Well, I mean, insurance is only a fraction of, of, you know, probably, Clint, what's an average, you know, cost of insurance that, that you pay for, you know, something like rain insurance?
Well, I don't want to give a number because the variables are so out there, but what I want to tell you is, when you look at all the variables, you may actually not want to purchase it, because it's a very high percentage that it won't pay out. You have to set hour parameters. You have to decide if you want to add lightning. You have to decide if you want to purchase rain, do you want the rain to be monitored at the event? Or is it going to be monitored at a local weather station? Some insurance companies will only provide one or the other. So it's a very tricky business that it will actually pay out. So I'll go with that.
Well, see, I think that's why it matters to us. Because if we're going to do these contracts, we lost $4,000 on this last year, did we not? So that's why I think the insurance plays into it, whether we do it, whether we don't do it. Do we want to do these kind of contracts? Do we want to do contracts with companies that have some sort of deal where they give you a discount rate, just so we know what we're getting into? That's how I think it plays into it, even if we don't approve it or not.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is that the contract is the contract. I mean, they're not offering rain or shine. Their makeup is still at 50% of the cost, as I recall, on a Sunday, which, which quite frankly is, it doesn't work for us. So, you know, we will investigate the cost of insurance for the 4,000, but, but we're not prepared to pay another $4,000 to have them come back for a makeup show, if you will. But, you know, my anticipation is that an insurance policy for a $4,000 contract's going to be well under $500. But again, you know, we haven't done one in the past. And that's why I asked them to, you know, follow up with Clint and get in the devils, the devils of the details as to whether or not that would even pay out if you had to utilize it.
Right. Well, that, that's the only reason I would be curious about it, is it might help us make the decisions on how we want to do these contracts. That was my only concern. Is that all we, everything?
But I don't, I don't, $4,000, it's like you buy a coffee pot and they ask you if you want insurance on it, you know. You don't want to pay $10 insurance on a $25 coffee pot, so.
That's right. $4,000 is different.
It's whatever you can afford to lose. It's what insurance covers, something catastrophic.
Okay.
Moving along.
Moving along. Thank you, Vicki.
All right, to answer, answer the question that came up earlier, what did you all budget for the vehicles? On that, the service vehicle, the actual amount on the budget was actually 63.5. Keep in mind, you're only buying the chassis, so there's still budgeted money to actually put the, the back end of that truck on there. So if, if you don't understand, that's basically the cab and, and the back where the back end of the truck fits onto it, the boxes and things like that. So, so I didn't want you to think, well, why'd you budget it 63.5 for something where you're asking for like 31,000, give or take? That's because we still have to put the, the back end in the bid on the, the truck itself. So we're getting a huge discount on the chassis. Now we just have to put the box on it.
Okay, so item E, Community Development. David?
All right, this is a conditional use permit. The council last year and previously has approved Mr. Fernandez of Mirror Lake Collision to have a conditional use for a towing and wrecker service at 82 Conners Road. He went before the Plan and Zoning Commission. It was a 3-0 vote. 3-0, there was two members absent, that's why 3-0 vote. And so their recommendation is to, the council, to go ahead and renew the conditional use permit for another year. It does require a public hearing and the applicant has been invited to attend.
I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
You got any problems with it? That's your neck of the wood, right?
It's not actually my neck of the woods, but it is. But I have no problems with it.
It's renewed, it's fenced in. Okay, number, item two, under E, Tire Recycling, Keep Carroll Beautiful.
Yes, Mr. Josh Engel, Director of Community Affairs with Keep Carroll Beautiful's here, so I'm going to ask him at the council as well, to go ahead and have him address the council on what they plan to do with the V-Plex.
My boy is luxurious, hey, days, but I did bring all some stickers here. If you don't mind passing those down. Our plan with the V-Plex is to set up a 53-foot trailer. And what we're going to be doing is providing an opportunity for Villareca citizens and Indian Hall Carroll County citizens to bring up to 10 tires for free. Basically what they'll do is pull in and a very spacious parking lot would be perfect for our needs. There would be a circuit. We have volunteers from several different organizations that would be available there to help them remove the tires from their vehicles. And we would load them up into the trailer. At the V-Plex, the trailer would actually be parked by Liberty Tire, probably a day or so before the event. We're planning at the very end of the large lot next to the playground. And it should be picked up either the day after or possibly the next day. Liberty Tire tends to not immediately pick up the, the trailer. But the first in would be free. The next in after that would be $5 apiece. And then anywhere after that would be $3 apiece. But most, your average citizen only has three or four sitting around in their trees in the, in their woods. But by doing this, we help prevent blight, which as we all know, deeply affects our socioeconomic status, as well as lessen the risk of Zika virus by taking the homes away from the mosquitoes. But we do appreciate your consideration, letting us do this. We, as Lindsey Fow, the executive director, and I have spoken with David at the end of last year. We're hoping to do as much for Villareca this year as possible. It's all new leadership. And we feel that in the past, Villareca hasn't had the opportunity to be included in as many of the events we have. Well, the first two are in Villareca. And our garden tour, which is very successful, is going to be split between Carrollton and Villareca. And we're hoping to get a lot more adopt-a-road organizations in Villareca as well, so we'll get some more science here as well.
Well, we appreciate that. We really do. And the fact that this is no cost to the city either. This is, y'all are totally pulling this off yourselves.
Yes.
Sounds great to me. I don't have any tires, but it, maybe it'll help with some of the illegal dumping of tires too.
Sure. And, and we feel this is an opportunity to help ease some of that. Hey, you know, if you find any between now and March 18th, please feel free to, to drop them off. And then April 15th, hopefully if, if it is allowed, we would like to have our e-recycling event at the, at the Mill Amphitheater, in conjunction with Flowers Bakery. And that will be an opportunity for people to bring computers and VCRs and TVs and stuff, but we'll talk about that at a later day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
It's at the V-Plex on March 18th. I hope there's no conflicts here. What part of the V-Plex they dump in there?
Next item we added, E3 Excise Tax on Alcohol.
Yeah, the, the city council last year authorized a audit of our non-bars and other liquor establishments in the city. Our consultant has, is ready to move forward on the final outcome that does involve some penalties. For instance, I've been educated on underpouring. I just thought that those were chintzy drinks. I, I didn't realize that, you know, they weren't putting the right amount of alcohol on them. So I have communicated, they communicated to me, I've communicated with our city attorney. And our city attorney has taken the liberty to write up a resolution that then can allow that audit process to get into the final throes here. So with that, Mr. Mecklen can explain this 10% penalty to you and the cap.
The change is that the ordinance that we passed last year had a penalty provision of 5% per month compounding, so that, you know, if somebody didn't pay for six or seven months, it was a penalty of, at that point, 35, 40%, which is in excess of what the state allows us to charge. So this is simply to, and I think that was just mainly a typo that was in that ordinance. So this will change the penalty to be 10% of the amount that's owed as a flat fee. And then 1% per month charged for interest until it's paid off, which is in keeping with the state law.
So the only thing that's happening here is that we're actually reducing those penalties?
The total penalty, yes.
Nothing else is happening?
Nothing else.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that item? Okay. F, Public Safety, Patrol Cars?
All right, this, the chief and I spoke, so I'm going to go ahead and jump in on here. All right, so in the 2016 Douglas County Splas, there is $120,000 per year that is allocated for patrol cars. The request here is for three 2017 Ford Explorer Interceptor SUVs from Don Rich. However, I'm going to ask the council to consider this between now and Tuesday. And that is that I would like to increase that number to four. Reason behind that is, is that twofold. One, the F-250, the F-450 out of Carroll County Splas is actually going to come in about $6,100 less. Second, we are actually going to have staff attach the chassis on that truck. And we anticipate to also be able to put back into play roughly about $20,000 of designated splas there. So in talking with the chief, we can still make the existing budget work, even with the four vehicles if the council authorizes it, and have no impact, but still have revenue set back aside to the council on those two items.
Would you just give a brief, well, and it may come in more handy when we have the regular meeting, of an explanation for the people that'll be there at the meeting, why we need these vehicles. Obviously, some of our other ones are getting old or dilapidated and we give them to the recreation department. You know how we just kind of put them in other departments? Maybe that, and also I had a question on, this is coming out of the Douglas County Splas, how it impacts the Douglas County citizens who, who pass this splas and the benefits and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and we'll do so. Keep in mind, this is the first year that the police department have gotten any Douglas County Splas money. The, in fact, the previous splas was for their Justice Center, so, so no one benefit.
How many years was that?
Six years.
That was six years the splas was paying off the jail over there?
Correct, yes. And then, and then of course, we're actually down one vehicle. If you recall, last year, we had, we actually lost two admin cars. Both of them got totaled. You approved one admin car. The second, again, the insurance checks because of the miles, we just get filthy amounts. So the goal is to go with the normal standard of replacing the three cars, which means continue to add. And then you move the older cars into administrative cars. And then this is to try to also get one additional Explorer as we aggressively try to make numbers on our take-home vehicle policy that the council approved last year and then allowed them.
You know what, I'm only going to stop you now because I don't appreciate it. But I think that information will be more useful probably when the citizens are sitting up here that might want to hear that. Sorry, didn't want to cut you off there. Okay. Governing body, number one, Community Development Grant Program.
All right, the council approved $15,000 in its budget. This is $15,000 assigned by the governing body. So this is staff's first attempt, stab at an actual application process. When we envisioned the Community Development Grant, last year there was a lot of concern about, you know, free, not free, when you talk about services, resources, things of that, what can you come up with? So when we were formulating the, the budget, we have, had suggested putting in a Community Development Grant Program that allows this council to say, okay, you get an application, you, you hear the merits of it, you decide, okay, we want to fund it. Well, the mill rents at X, so we're going to give you grant money for X. But instead of the department that actually has to maintain this facility, just doing it for free, because it's never free, is that that grant money then can take care of the actual physical cost of whatever event. And then you also, of course, can also award monetary or otherwise for things that the city wouldn't have. For instance, like if they needed to cover sound and lighting, we don't have that, that would allow things. So it's really an opportunity for the council to sort of get its arms around some of the concerns that it raised last year.
So basically, when a nonprofit or something, we want to use the mill, we want to have this event there. We have this money budgeted, set aside with a cap on it. They do an application and figure out what it will cost to supply that, and that'll come out of those funds. Okay. Any, any questions, discussion?
So if the council does have any feedback on any of the criteria, anything that we put in there, it'd be helpful. And then if we don't get any, then we would just simply ask the council to adopt the document. And then we'll go ahead and start circulating it widely, so the public knows that it's available.
I haven't read, I will admit, I haven't read all the way through that, so I'll do that. But I, you've already taken note of the information that one of the citizens that's applying for it said would be helpful, and we're going to include that.
Yeah, in fact, in here you have attached in the back end, we've already received an inquiry from the Villareca Arts Coalition for the Arts Fest 2017. Last year, this council did an MOU. So I've already shared that MOU with the citizens, saying this is what was requested last year. So certainly, as soon as the council approves the application, go ahead and fill it out. You can get it on the next agenda at the next meeting. And then staff will actually assign a cost to everything. And then you all can decide what you want to fund, what you don't want to fund, or whether or not you even want to fund anything. So you always have that option.
Tuesday, we won't be voting.
No, just on the application. I just need that you guys bless the application, so that we can go ahead and start taking applications for you.
Okay, all right, thank you. That included the Main Street Arts Coalition, did it not?
Yes, it did.
We just discussed. Meeting minutes? We don't have to handle any of that, right? Other than approval on Tuesday?
Yeah, there'll be approval. Has the council received each of these yet, Madam Clerk?
First two.
January 10th, Councilman, January 10th, and I'm at the end of the January 18th. They'll have it tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Number three, Council Retreat?
The mayor requested that this be put on the agenda, but given his absence, it's a recommendation to just table it until Tuesday.
Okay.
I agree. Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Since something...
City of Ethics, number four?
City of Ethics, all right. The city, this, this is that gift that keeps on giving. So I think two or three times last year, the staff had brought forth correspondence from the Georgia Municipal Association regarding the City of Ethics designation. The, the current designation that the city has has now expired. It requires that the city review its ethics ordinance and also have a ethics board as a part of its criteria. So we, we meaning the mayor, myself, and Councilman McDougal had been at the Georgia Municipal Association training. Municipal Association training, and got an opportunity to see some of the cities being re-upped, and then some of the new ones being awarded, and I had made aware to them that our designation had expired, and so, it was requested to put it on the agenda for discussion.
When we handled this before, all my discussions I had with Janet when she was here, the discussions I've had with you, listening to Mr. Mecklen share, it seemed to me that the whole thing about the City of Ethics was just, you're saying, you're putting up saying that, putting up something that's saying, we're a city of ethics. It doesn't make you a city of ethics. You have to, the way you adhere to it is you pass an ordinance that says you're a city of ethics, and my concern about the board, seems like I recall you saying that that can be abused for political reasons, you have to be real careful with having an ethics board.
I did say all of that, and looking at this draft here, I still have some comments that I think I'd like to make on the setup, on the, we're all for being a city of ethics in principle. The devil's always in the details, so, and by trying to set up a City of Ethics board, you don't wanna just set up a political witch hunt board that people are using for political purposes, just to poke each other. And so, I, I am gonna try and draft some, just my observations about some of this for y'all to consider. Much of it probably is very, very good. It, it does, it is different than what our former City of Ethics process was, which was much more relaxed than this one is. So, by Tuesday, I'll have you some comments about this to, to consider, as we move forward to reestablish ourselves as a designated City of Ethics.
Does it, does it have any impact in really making a city any more ethical? 'Cause it seems to me, some of the cities that were cities of ethics, we, we see on the Channel Two news on a regular basis, and I'm like, what's, is there a purpose behind having it? Does it really serve a purpose? That's what I'm trying to find out. Somebody's gotta sell me on this.
The, the only real change that I, I would see in adopting something like this, right now, if, if a citizen has a complaint, an ethical complaint, generally speaking, they're gonna show up and voice it straight to your face, or get it to your attention, but there is not a formal process as to how you consider that, right now.
So, that might be a good idea.
And that, we do need to have some process. I'm, I'm not arguing against having some policy procedure or process to have ethical complaints considered, but, you know, if, if we become so tied up with people alleging ethical complaints against each other based on opposition to how somebody has voted on something, then, then we are devoting a lot of time, trouble, and attention to non-productive matters.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Madam Chair?
Anyone else?
Um, the, the next deadline for filing is April first, and, and although I appreciate the city attorney saying you could have something by Tuesday to look at, I, I think the council, because of the sensitivity, would much rather a work session. So, so, I would say, my recommendation is that the council just simply table this until next month's work session, and then that gives the, um, the city attorney a little breathing room to actually draft something, and then you all have the opportunity to digest it, and then come discuss it.
I like that idea, is, we have to reach a consensus, right?
Yes.
You have to reach a majority vote.
Well, let me just say that I remember you talking about this last year, and I remember a lot of what you just said, and I won't speak for Jeff, for the mayor, but at that GMA conference, when we first heard about this, it sounds good, but once you start reading to the details of it, you can see where you can find a witch hunt pretty quickly, over almost nothing. So, I'd be interested in, in seeing some way, you know, to say that there's a process, but I think that the way this is, is drafted out is, I think there's a lot of pits there that, that just simply could be avoided. So, that's my, I mentioned that since I did talk to David about that at the GMA conference.
So, it sounds like it might be helpful for us to have a little bit more time to look at this and digest it. Okay, anything else on City of Ethics? Item five, Harthouse?
On the Harthouse, I, I have attached the proposed map and a proposed diagram of the lift station that we would be taking over. I don't know if that's been distributed to y'all.
Yes.
We, we have it.
We have it.
So, so, the agreement is as final as it's gonna get, and it's ready for y'all to be considering it. I have shared those plaits with the church. I hadn't gotten any feedback from them on it yet, but I know that they, I believe that they may have worked with John Bass in coming up with this, I'm not sure, but by Tuesday, I will make sure that I have it okay from the church.
I think the one thing we had asked for is what the cost of these first three items was.
Actually, four of those. Again, I asked for those dollar amounts, A through E, except D, and then I also asked about the eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, what did we get for this money? And where is it?
It was the church's.
I prayed.
This, no, no, design, it, the city requested the church to design a path, and it was a free-flow path, and they designed, I think Howard Ray designed it.
Is that in here?
It was in here at one time, but.
It was, it is, the, the church's original design has now been replaced by.
Replaced by the other one.
That last drawing by Georgian West.
That's it now.
We utilized that in compiling that document.
And that's what we spent the whole eleven thousand?
Yes, that was a cost that they had already incurred in the very beginning, to draw up the sewer line drawing, and that was, and, and Councilman McDougal, I'm sorry, I did tell you I was gonna get those costs that Pete Zorbanos had provided us for the SCADA system, the generator, the wiring, and the pumps, and I didn't do that, but I'll email that to you tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate that, and.
And, and I will say that on the eleven thousand dollars, I, I do need to give some attention to that, because it, it is a sum that we did tell the church that we would pay, and it was for the engineering work that they had done at the time for locating the sewer line. The city itself has also spent some money in doing that, but I think we still, they're still of the impression that we're gonna reimburse them for that cost.
Well, if we told them we would, then, if we're gonna be a city of ethics, we're gonna need to, to stay by our word. The only thing that aggravates the tar out of me is, when that item B, or exhibit B, that they presented, that they paid for, we figured they were looking out for their interest, and they had something designed, and then we thought, well, gosh, the city should look at what it's gonna cost. We didn't like the numbers we saw. We should have somebody who's watching out for the city do, do a process. Well, are you saying now that we asked them to do that, and then we did our own too, and now we're gonna pay for, well?
The city did request, the city requested the church design a path for the sewer line.
I think that's right. In, in the beginning, we asked them to provide a plan to have sewer go across their property.
And that's what they spent to do it.
We didn't, we didn't agree to pay for that in the beginning at all, but they did do that work, and they provided it, and then, yes, when the city looked at it, it really, in our, in the city's mind, that wasn't the best route that we saw for the sewer line going in the future.
I just had not realized prior to that we had asked them to do it, 'cause that didn't make sense for us to do that, and then ask for our own too. We might as well have just done our own, but that's done, and I bet we'll all be ready to have a party, and so, we'll, First Baptist, when we can get this thing done, I'm anxious to get this one over with.
Just to be sure I understand, we have a route here, but that's just an option this council can take. It doesn't tie us into using that route, it's just one of our options when it comes down to put the sewer line in, we could put it wherever we want it, we don't have to follow this route.
It will be the First Baptist Church promising to the city that at such time that.
We can use that route if we need it.
Put in a sewer line, that they will contribute the easement for that sewer line, 'cause otherwise, if they did not agree to that, and we chose somewhere down in the future to put in the sewer line, we would either have to negotiate to purchase it from them, or to condemn it from them.
I, I just wanna make that clear, 'cause I think Councilman Best had said, do we have to do this? We had discussed this one time, said, no, it's just one of our options, we now have another option. If we wanna go another route, we can take it.
We're not contracting myself, just saying, they'll give us easement when and if we.
If we wanna use this route.
Stand out there. Okay, any other discussion on that one? Harthouse? Okay, number six, Boarding Committee Appointments, A, Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, Madam Chair, currently, the council has two open appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission. Staff has advertised for those. You currently have College Professor Nancy Mims, who has made application. We have taken the application, invited it for recommendation from the HBC members. We've gotten affirmative responses, so this is for the council consideration of Ms. Nancy Mims to the Historic Preservation Commission. You'll see two dates. When I mentioned that there's two vacancies, that's because there were two resignations, so they would be filling, at that appointment, you have two unexpired terms, so, on Tuesday, if you consider to move forward with Ms. Mims, the council will have to specify either the term expiring on 2018, or the term expiring on 2019.
Item B, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Madam Chair, this is the annual reappointments of the members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's five members currently. Each council person has a appointment to that. Last year, I had entertained the notion to move those from one-year appointments to three-year appointments, to make them consistent. If the council wants to move three years, your city attorney can advise you. The best scenario, he could certainly write that up and make that available on Tuesday, but at this point, you have five members, you can, and then last year, you went, by each ward and each member council, either reappointed, in fact, last year, each one of them reappointed their existing members, so basically, each member will have to decide whether or not they want to appoint the existing or someone else, and then if you'll consider the staff recommendation for continuity and training to change the term from one year to three years, and then we can implement a staggered term based on some council input.
Okay, so, we can do all of that on Tuesday, even if we don't have a written ordinance that says three years?
Yeah, yeah, the council need to talk among themselves. If, if you're leaning towards three years, you'll have to have, when we do the appointments, whether you pick straws or whatever, I'd recommend that the, you do, say, two people for one year, two people for two years, and then one person for three years, and then put them on a staggered term, so that in no given year, so you could have two years, three years, like the council, you know, it's your choice. One way to, to potentially get around the politics of that is figure out where, like, if there's three of you for reelection November, say, okay, we're gonna give those three a two-year appointment, and the others a three-year appointment, and, you know, again, you'll just have to come to a consensus and decide, and then your city attorney will have to tell you how to memorialize that to make it happen. He's got the fun job of us all. Does that make sense?
Okay, good.
We'll certainly come with a proposal if you want, but.
Anybody else have anything to say about planning and zoning? All righty. Number seven, asphalt paving?
Right, um, last year, the council had gone through and made some priority requests on paving, and there obviously is never enough money always to go around, so, at the top of the staff recommendation list, which the council adopted, is Charleston Place. That is a subdivision that is, the majority is built out, and it is due to be topped. Staff has been maintaining the infrastructure in there because of the stormwater, so, this is a staff recommendation to go ahead and move forward with the topping, and then the actual adopting of Charleston Place, so that we can then start counting those, all that mileage under El Mig. I've met with the, um, the mayor and the county commission chairman for Carroll County. In order to cut cost, Carroll County has agreed to come in and pave that subdivision at actual cost. However, in order to, the commercial cost was ninety-eight, six fifty, so, at this point on Tuesday, I'm gonna ask for it not to exceed. Obviously, it's not gonna come anywhere close, but I can't know until all the paving's done and the tickets are done, as to what the actual cost is. You also see one additional road, this is from Dallas Highway to Old Stone Road. You all, most of you were at the groundbreaking for the new Tanner Expansion, so this is the portion that actually was behind the tent, from Old Stone to Dallas Highway at North Avenue, and the hospital then is going to take the old portion from Old Stone all the way up North Avenue, all the way to Dallas Highway. The reason that's important is, that's going to be a ingress for the ambulances, so, it was on the list, we wanna go ahead and take care of that before they actually, and we wanna work together, we met with Georgian West, their engineering firm, so that the curb and gutter and all the paving gets done, and then, again, all turnkey, the counties agreed to do all these sections that I've requested.
Any discussion on the asphalt paving? Executive session?
That's where you actually have to, 'cause you are in a.
We need to call a meeting into order first. I think you've advertised this for a, a meeting, so, you need to conclude the executives, I mean, the work session, call the meeting of the council into order, and then we can move to go into executive session.
Do I get to use this? Call a meeting into order?
Some.
Sorry. All in favor? Practice this a little bit more. Thank you.
I didn't know we needed a motion to call a meeting. You just call it.
You know, but, and, and you're called into order now.
You just call it.
So, make a motion to go into executive session.
For the purposes listed in the minutes, there are the four purposes set forth.
Have to read those out?
No, I think you can just incorporate that into your motion, is that, the minutes do, the agenda does state the reasons.
Well, I add it to my motion, that, that all the things that are added down there, we will go into executive session for that.
Second.
First and a second?
All for a vote.
All in favor?
Which is in the executive session.
Before y'all go to that, can I, the governor has decided to make tomorrow's House come Friday also, pretty sure it's 'cause of our favorite painting also. So, tomorrow, Friday, so everybody in the state will be wearing costumes. Probably 'cause of it, but I.
Went viral, chief, went viral.
He's supposed to be calling me later.
Okay. All right, this is just.
Red and black, right?
Red and black.
Forget it.
Forget it.
Yeah, all right, this is just my standard statement before we go in, we do not anticipate any formal action coming out from executive session, and then the last thing on your agenda when you return will be the consent agenda review. So, for those in the audience that wanna hang out, know that there won't be any formal votes anticipated.
You need me, you don't need me to.
That's just, that's a disclaimer.
We were going into executive session anyway.
All right, is the candy in there, Keith?
I don't know, I'm bringing mine, I'm bringing mine with me.
It is good.
I really like red and black, and I have been accused of Georgia colors, but you know that's not so.
Hey, Sarah, something wrong with mine?
I don't know, I'm bringing mine, I'm bringing mine with me.
It is good.
I really like red and black, and I have been a huge Georgia color. But you know that's not red.
Hey, Sarah, something's going on, man, it's a little worth it.
That's your senior discount, sir.